Mr. Muesen? Mrs. Tagan?
Here.
Mrs. Spatz?
Here.
Mr. Sucker?
Here.
Mrs. Eber?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Here.
Mrs. Redman?
Here.
We will have the agenda. I would like to motion to approve the agenda.
Oh, second.
All those in paper?
Right.
Or opposed? And approval of board education meeting minutes from July?
I would like to motion to approve the July minutes as presented.
Awesome. All those in paper?
Aye.
Opposed? And treasurer's reports.
All right, we have a cash balance on seven one twenty twenty five of four million five hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and ten dollars. We had cash receipts of one hundred and ninety thousand two hundred and fifty eight dollars, July interest of sixteen thousand nine hundred and twenty six dollars, for a total of four million seven hundred and seventy seven thousand five hundred and ninety six dollars. We had cash disbursements of seven hundred and forty one thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars, giving us a cash balance on seven thirty one twenty twenty five of four million thirty six thousand three hundred and twenty one dollars. And in account one, three million eight hundred and eleven thousand six hundred and forty four dollars. Account two, two hundred and fifty three thousand eight hundred and three dollars. Account three, sixty two thousand thirty five dollars. And then our general fund checking account has a balance of ninety one thousand one hundred, negative ninety one thousand one hundred and sixty two dollars, but that includes August teacher payables. The total of those is four million thirty six thousand three hundred and twenty one dollars. And we have vouchers four one eight six zero through four one nine three eight.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report.
Oh, second.
Question? Are you opposed? And donation recognition and acceptance.
All right, we had a number of very nice donations again this month. We had an eight hundred dollar anonymous donation for volleyball uniforms. Colors of Plymouth is going to donate one thousand two hundred scoops of custard for our back to school night. It was a big hit last year and we're happy that they're coming on for us again this year. Um, yeah, Alcaray Comula Education Foundation had another two hundred and fifty dollar donation for intense core resourcing. Uh, Hock Vintage Donation Collection gathered one thousand dollars towards a band percussion performance, which is coming out later in the year. I-Vars USA out of Sheboygan donated sixty seven classroom shares. And Sartori donated two hundred and fifty dollars towards the sea perch competition.
I'll make a motion to accept the donations and thank the donors for their generosity.
Oh, second. Discussion? All those in paper?
Aye.
Are you opposed? And guest scores sounded public comments?
We didn't have any scheduled this month.
And written comments?
Also not.
Um, school reports grades five through eight.
All right, I think I'll certainly have attendance data, so I'm going to talk a little bit more on a district level. Um, we chose to look at, as we start the school year, attendance data. And where we've been over the course of five years and where we were in the last school year as we start this school year, what are some positive things we can do to continue what we have as a positive trend? So, attendance is always important. We know that when kids are in school, they're learning more, right? If we're missing school, we know that we see negative outcomes on academic achievement with poor attendance. So, the first attendance metric that we're looking at, um, in your board packet is looking at average daily attendance rate. This is just looking at the number of days students attended versus the number that they click and a simple percentage off of that. Um, as you can see there, in the twenty one twenty two school year was our lowest point, still strong in comparison to the statewide average on this chart, but we went from about ninety four point seven to ninety five point four between, um, the three buildings. And this last school year, our range was from ninety five point nine to ninety six point four. So, almost a percentage incline over the course of those four years, um, as we put in some, in place some extra measures to help increase attendance. The other piece of it is that we look at is chronic absenteeism. Chronic absenteeism is defined as a student missing more than ten percent of the possible school days in the school year. Um, and so that in twenty twenty one, it's not on this chart, but we were at seven point six percent in twenty twenty one, and that is down last school year to three point four percent. So, that's been a positive trend, and the state has actually seen that chronic absenteeism marker continue to increase at a state level. So, luckily, we have been going the opposite direction, say, luckily, we made attempts to make sure that we're going in the right direction on that. So, positive things there. In terms of action steps that we've taken over the last few years and will continue to take, um, proactive family outreach. So, I think that this is something we've done a really good job of communicating through letters, through information to parents of where students are at in their attendance. Success plans we've done so that if we see an attendance issue rising, we're meeting with parents, we're having conversations about why is this an attendance issue? How can we help? Um, and so lots of collaboration with families and with students to make sure that attendance is addressed earlier versus it becoming an issue and a problem that we can't really go back and get those days. Um, increased access to student services, including mental health services like PATH. There's been a big, uh, push in the district that I think has been helpful to keeping kids in school and, and active attendance. Positive attendance campaigns, including in-school incentives, communications about the importance of attendance, both in district and school level communications. We've talked a lot about our ten days, right? That this is really ten days of excuse and, and what chronic absenteeism does to student achievement over the course of time. Uh, collaboration with community partners. If we find barriers like transportation or other resources that stop a student from getting to school or potentially do, we look to partner with others. Alcaray Cares has been great for some students in helping getting some resources to families that needed to help get students to school and, and to help them in their family situations. So, those are examples. Um, and then this year, we're looking at pursuing a social worker to partner with the district. Uh, again, another connection, right, to outside community and also a community connection for families to come into the school and have some conversations about how we can help support attendance. Um, so overall, positive attendance trends, uh, and we're going to continue with those steps this year. And again, proactive is, is the goal.
So, one thing we're going to do this year is we're going to bring some data to the board each month and not just looking at the numbers and showing either growth areas of focus, but what are we doing to focus in on those areas as well to show continual improvement over time? Um, attendance is one of the data markers on the school report card. Um, DPI, as always said, they'd like to see ninety five percent or higher attendance rate in schools. Um, we're, we're doing much better than that. And, you know, it's in a small school, three, four percent makes, makes a big difference. But, you know, if you take three and a half percent out of our five hundred and thirty two kids, we're, we're missing less than fifteen kids, about twelve kids a day, district wide. I mean, that's, that's incredible. That's, that's really great attendance, so, um. These guys are going to continue looking at the data this year, and we're hoping to see those numbers increase even more. You know, it's, again, it's hard to go from great to greater. And these numbers are, are pretty great, but even if we see it increase by a tenth of a percent each year, um, it's best to have our kids in seats so they can learn. I don't necessarily need the, the exact percent, but roughly how, what percent do you think we've increased in total students since twenty one twenty two? And it's in the, our enrollment's gone up significantly since then, hasn't it? What'd you guys say? Maybe I, I mean, our local enrollment has gone up, but our open enrollment has gone up too. So, I want to say even since the time I've been here, we have seventy kids. We grew up all four fifty, I think, my first year, and now we're over the middle of five to the upper. So, these, so the percentages have gone up significantly while our attendance has gone up. Like, our numbers, our enrollment has gone up, which is impressive, I think. Even more impressive.
So, on the middle school grades five through eight report, I'm going to talk a little, mostly about middle school, but I will also sprinkle some things in for summer school that have been impactful for our four tiers to fourth grade, as well as some of our high schoolers as well. Um, so this summer, one thing we did in summer school is we really had to focus on summer literacy skills and looking at how do we rearrange some of the, the ways we provide summer literacy skills in summer school. So, two things that we did, one, resorder reads, which was a program we put in place where it wasn't necessarily a scheduled class you could sign up for, but it was a twenty minute block. And Mrs. Webb was awesome all summer, was here to work with kids individually in small group. Those students that we really identified needed additional support in their literacy skills. And so she did that for six weeks and we're really grateful that she was able to do that. It was a success. Kids got to pick still their four classes, and they missed a portion of those classes in order to do that resorders reads program. So, that's something that we needed to put in, um, anyway, as we look at Act Twenty, and we're sort of getting ahead of the ballgame on that. Uh, summer Lexio is for middle school students. Lexio's a program that helps students to continue to develop literacy skills. We provided access to parents before the school year ended so that students could continue that. We also had some students in the middle school level doing that as part of their summer school program as well. Um, we're continuing our professional development planning, is really finishing our last little pieces of that as we start the school year in terms of the planning piece of it. And this week, we really got into some of the implementation. Um, today, we had the six eight ELA team meeting to review their math, or sorry, their ELA curriculum, um, with looking at this year, where are we in terms of ELA curriculum and adoption potentially for the couple of school year, um, of twenty six, twenty seven? We also are having a focus on our grading and assessment. That would be grades five through twelve, working with CISA seven to look at, um, where are our assessment practices? What are our best assessment practices? Making sure that our learning intentions and learning targets within the classrooms are aligned to our assessments and that we're really giving good data about where kids are in their, in their learning sequences and using that to inform our decision making as teachers. Um, coaching support for CPM. So, in middle school, sixth grade, six through eight, we are implementing college preparatory mathematics, which is a series that we've used in the past, but this is an updated version. So, there'll be some coaching implementation process there. And then science of reading professional development, special education teachers at the middle school and high school, and also our EDL teacher is participating in that, really getting grounded in the science of reading and using those, uh, that knowledge and those skills to help students achieve the highest possible literacy outcomes they can. Our five eight science team is reviewing standards that started in the spring and just, again, ensuring that if there are any gaps, that we're adjusting curriculum and, and teaching as needed. As far as maintaining a positive student-focused school culture, uh, the middle school team has met with our advisory PLC a couple of weeks ago. There was four of us that met, you know, for the twenty five, twenty six action plan, starting to develop our weekly activities related to positive behavioral, social, emotional, skill, growth, and, and team building, um, planned on our student month recognitions, quarterly student recognition assemblies, and resorted date celebrations. Again, all of those are really focused on creating a culture of belonging here at school and in the middle school. Um, great news on summer school was that we were able to have a hundred and ninety six four K through seventh grade students participate in summer school, which, when that compares, I think last year we had a hundred and seventy two, a hundred and seventy one, which was a record year that I'm aware of last year. So, to get another twenty plus kids is, is pretty awesome. Um, four K through twelve, that includes some of the band and marching and classes going on up here at the high school. We had two hundred and forty six kids. And so, we continue to see summer school grow, and a lot of it's really a testament to our staff who've given their time to be there for summer and provide a lot of different opportunities for students and lots of positive confidence at the door, even after a week of Fourth of July break. The kids were excited to come back and they were excited for summer school. So, I really want to say thank you to the staff because they, they make that possible every day.
Those increases in numbers help our student enrollment counts as well because that FTE gets rolled into what, uh, your state, so. It's, it's a great, uh, great increase to show. So, we don't have an elementary report today because, uh, we should have had her maybe, yep, at the end of, at the end of July. And, uh, Ryan did put one together. He's on vacation, but, uh, one of his tickets out the door was to create a presentation for you guys tonight. So, he did videotape something and he'll, uh, he'll present it.
Tomorrow, um, so just want to thank Dr. Ingberst and the board for allowing me to, uh, do a recording of my tip report so, so I could have this one last vacation. So, uh, not sure where we are in the agenda. Um, Chris may have or will share our data on attendance and our action steps in terms of, of always trying to move forward and grow in terms of, uh, taking care of attendance and making sure that, that each year we have less and less student chronic absenteeism. So, right now, I'm just going to focus on some of the things that, um, in terms of school culture, um, that the high school be focusing on this year. And, um, you know, first of all, I, I think we have a very solid and strong school culture in our building. Um, we'll continue to keep that a focus. We do have a PLC, uh, that you'll hear about shortly that is involved, uh, and has a focus on our school culture, and that does include teachers and it does include students. So, one of the things that we're going to continue to do is we are going to continue to have student assemblies, um, each quarter uh, that recognize a variety of different things from athletic participation to student achievement to attendance to student participation in many of our clubs or the organizations and teams. Um, we've kind of changed a little bit over the last couple of years. Uh, we also throw in some pep rally games there, and students will, um, have the opportunity to compete for, compete for spirit stick points. Um, our school-focused PLC will continue to come up with incentives. They'll continue to celebrate, recognize, um, school spirit, student achievement, attendance behavior. Those are the things that we try to incentivize. Um, each quarter, um, our teacher, school-focused PLC group will look at something that we can obviously use data on, um, and students that achieve that threshold do get recognized with different incentives. Sometimes it's food, sometimes it's time, um, sometimes it's spirit stick points, just trying to find out what are some of the carrots out there for students. And really, our spirit stick and our incentives have any great success over the last year and a half that we've done that. Um, I will continue, um, I have a bi-weekly reserver rundown, um, that I give to staff, send out electronically, that basically gives staff shout-outs of all the great things that are going on in classrooms. Uh, we try to celebrate staff. There's always an educational piece that we look at, best practices. Uh, there's usually some sort of trivia or something fun there, um, usually relate it back to my life or what I'm thinking about. I do a lot of trivia, and some of my best thoughts are from Fond du Lac to Alcaray, and Alcaray back to Fond du Lac. Um, so we try to make it fun, uh, but also really try to, um, celebrate all the great things we have going down with our classroom. And really, that is really teacher-focused. Student council will continue to explore new traditions for homecoming. Um, in the school year, we have changed a lot, um, over the past four or five years, ever since COVID, to try to do more student-centered things, change homecoming up, make it more fun, um, those types of things. And student council will continue to look at ways, um, in order to get student involvement and student voice. This year, we are hoping to create a student leadership group, um, and then also the volunteering opportunities we have. And obviously, that bring it up because we have downtown night, we had downtown night, um, on the eleventh, but there are many, many opportunities from, um, not only volunteering for things like downtown night, um, or vintage or any other great things we do, but also our own community service days. So, that is our high school activity report. Um, once again, thank you guys, and hopefully, like I said, I, I will see you when we get back.
Sure, we need to go over the number of occurrences that, uh, occurred in each of the buildings for physical restraint, restraints, and seclusions. We're happy to report that this year, we had zero instances in the district. So, um, again, that's great efforts by the staff to de-escalate situations before they go and get out of hand and, uh, use proper techniques with.
Professional development schedule for August of twenty twenty five?
All right, that was included in the pack as well. Um, that is our schedule of events, starting next week. We actually start this week with new teachers on Thursday. So, they're going to come in and we're going to just get all the administrative things taken care of. And then we take a tour of the village, go out for lunch, and they have some time to work with their mentors uh, right away on Thursday and just get, uh, their wraps around the building and, and through the district. And then we start next Monday with, with everybody back. And, uh, one thing, yes, the elementary teachers get a lot of work time in their classrooms this year just because they've had such a heavy load this year with all of the other things coming through that, um, they're just going to be a little bit extra time working in their classrooms this year than the other groups. But across the board, the, the focus, as Chris mentioned earlier, is, uh, grading assessments practices, and that'll be the focus for middle school and high school. And those are going to be a joint training session. We have experts coming in from CISA to work with the elementary on reading, math, and then the middle school on grading and assessment practices.
How many new staff do we have in this year?
We have three new teachers. Um, we've got, I think, five new support staff doing retirements. So, we'll go through that on the first day, but I think there were eight, um, in the opening slide to introduce. And some of those have started already over the course of the summer, uh, but they'll be new when everybody comes back. Are there board members going on Monday to the, I noticed the first full appointee school board, well, come Monday morning? Anybody like to attend? Welcome staff back. Eric, I think you did it last year. Sarah, did you do it last year?
I did it. I've always, I've always enjoyed doing it. I feel like I, I feel like I hog it because it's so fun, but.
You do a great job.
I'm happy to do it, um, and I'm available, so. But if anyone else wants to or wants to tag team, then please do.
Wanting for breakfast, it's a build-your-own skillet and. I'll let you do all the talking, but I'll, I'll be there to support.
You can be the face of the operation.
Development on school board committees.
All right, one of the topics of discussion at the school board professional development this summer was the development of school board committees. Google document went out for people to sign up over the last month, month and a half, and these were the responses that were received. So, uh, the max we can have is, is three, minimum we can have is one, I guess, to, to have committee, two preferably to have some conversation. So, I guess in personnel, we, we have two there, right? Um, Amanda, do you want to chair that one? Or do you want to lean on Mike for that one since he's not here?
For which one?
The personnel committee.
Does it make sense to, so everyone often think, I mean, obviously, this is from a week ago, but the personnel, you can tie that into the culture and then I can go into the culture and whatever. Which is kind of some degree. I don't know, that was just me throwing out just that we don't, I mean, because we also don't need all eight of these as well. We don't have to have eight subcommittees.
So, the personnel committee may look at handbook language, um, may look at.
I was going to offer to join the personnel committee also.
Okay.
But I don't really want to be the chair.
I'll chair it up.
Whatever.
All right.
Oh, look at you.
Sarah, can I add you to that though, as well?
Please.
Way to go, Amanda.
I mean, you can also add me to culture. Um, and I'll be on the policy committee alone.
Or you merge personnel and, and accept the policy as part of the personnel thing?
Yeah, I mean, there's.
Like, some of these can be combined. Like, I, I just feel like eight committees right off the bat is a lot, so.
At the end of the day, we're still going to formalize a chart for each of these committees, right? Because we talked about getting together and saying, okay, this is what we're focused on. This is when we plan on meeting, this is, et cetera. And we're going to have to revisit that each year as board members rotate on and off and titles change. I was going to propose that whoever the treasurer is, chair the finance committee, I think that only makes sense. So, if I'm not the treasurer next year, it wouldn't be me. So, I, I mean, there's going to be an annual review of these things, I think, right? But I, I, I think all of the, the language that we had around these are, is fantastic. In most cases, it's going to be word for word what we do, but we have the luxury of adjusting it as needed. Discussion, you guys would like to have a summary of these committees right now?
Well, let's talk about the policy committee.
Right.
Is there something that we could combine it with and do we feel like it's a committee we want to have? We should have volunteers regular.
It doesn't really go in with that. Because if it's really just like the policies surrounding like the handbook and all that, except for the Niola ones we, you know what I mean? That's kind of a.
Well, that's what the, that's what, I guess, when I've seen policy committees run before, it is reviewing the policies before we bring them to the group. So, if there's any questions, um, or any discussions based on those.
That combined with personnel?
That's what I, I think we should combine those two. Personnel and policy?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm going to share now. That's what happens when people put you in charge, you know?
It feels like that, it feels like the nature of that subcommittee will feel a bit more as needed.
Oh, for sure.
Right, there could be times when it's very busy.
Doesn't work, um.
Anybody else want to count numbers? Finance committee as well?
You said you'd be on finance or no?
I said I would like to be on, oh, I guess now I'm only on two. If I'm on personnel, culture, let's see. No, I think I'm, sorry, I'm not really one of you.
I'm not offended.
I think I would prefer to be on. Curriculum.
Combine culture, climate, and curriculum?
Well, I mean, not officially, not yet, but.
Oh, the communications?
Yeah, they're, they're actually going to take all of these. They're going to take three committees and.
With copy too, but we could have copy.
Guys will show it on Monday as well.
What is communicate, what is the, what is the thrust of the communications committee?
It's just reviewing practices that we use to communicate with stakeholders.
Something big coming up and we need to have a common message.
That seems to me maybe like some, like a committee that could be combined with something else. But that's just me. I wasn't here for the conversation.
Culture and climate.
And communication.
I, I would be willing, I don't think it's a bad consideration. I'm not going to go in culture and climate, just because. I would help, I would join the communications if there's no problem, so I'm fine.
I feel like it would be good to have two separate charters for these to keep it clear, but maybe combine them and, you know, meet up the same.
Be kind of back to back.
Back to back.
But kind of separate.
See what the overlap is.
I'm kind of leaving it, taking up maybe a, I'll see, and that one and the rest. What do we think?
And Amanda, does personnel refer to the personnel of this board or all of the personnel of the school district? The latter?
Yes.
So, I know there are some board personnel committees that just deal with the board.
Right.
I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
No, this will be, come handbook time, if there's any additions up to me, so you can talk about. Anything that, the changes that would deal with staff? So, what ones are combining then?
Just personnel and policy.
Personal policy, how about it?
Fills in those spots really nicely.
Can you move me to the chair on that? Yeah. Is the intent then to get together as a subcommittee before the next meeting and then normalize how we're, what that, and create that charter possible. And I guess pride doesn't have to be done for all eight of these, but it, pride shouldn't go too long without normalizing why they're doing this.
And I know, I don't, just speaking for myself on the, with the finance, Adam, I figured I'd just find a time that you might, I sit down and hash all that out. Whether you want to...
Wherever you guys want to discuss. I mean, throughout the year, things are going to pop up where I want you guys to get together and talk about these things before they come to the full board. So, you know, there are timely places throughout the year where certain meetings will occur. For example, personnel policy, when we get to handbook time or when we get to fuller revisions, that'll be a time we should, we should get together and talk. And some of these other things that can occur naturally throughout the course of their strategic planning. That's something that we can start right after, you know, after we have our board retreat. The summer, I want to continue to make that area of focus. Curriculum, we can talk about at any time if it needs to happen before, you know, curriculum gets passed through the board to plan for next year, so.
Should the chair just reach out to the members out there and then you add them in an email and then try to get a date and time aligned in the first meeting? Is just laying the groundwork of a purpose of that?
That's a great idea.
And then once we get the groundwork, we want, then we can start reacting to what happens. So chair emails members with you on that email, date times established, and then everybody goes?
Yeah, and I think we'll have to come up with a way to make sure that we broadcast this out to faculty and staff. In some cases, probably parents, I don't know. Maybe not. I guess to be determined.
Well, the committee list could go under the board tab on the website.
Yeah, so I mean, because part of this too was if somebody has a comment about communications, they wouldn't necessarily come to me. Or if they do, I would say we have a communications subcommittee. Erica and Sarah are on it, run it by, run it by them. So it helps us distribute questions that we receive. You know, if, if you get a buildings and grounds question, you can say, hey, we have a subcommittee, talk to Mike Grant or Chad. Instead of all, each of us having to, like, we need to speak on behalf of every single initiative at all times. So I want to make sure that we communicate this out to everybody.
Sarah, just for your knowledge, all the committees have to be, so they'll all be posted, they'll all come through you guys, they'll all be posted in our, our response. On the website and schools, Conbula Post Office and San Seals as well.
Any more discussion? Facility planning update.
Keep rolling right along with the meetings. We finished program meeting eighteen last week. And we're getting to a point where I think we're, we're getting ready to do some bits. Our next couple of meetings will be a walkthrough of the entire design and facility. And it's a long, my understanding, and a big thick packet where we just turn the pages and, is that correct, Chad?
All the page turn.
The page turn.
A lot of fun.
The last one was a long checklist too, so, so they're getting to be double checking, triple checking things, but... Some real positive things about the walkthroughs that, that are posted and that we've been many, many times. So we're excited about the design. It's now just fine tuning the details to make sure it all fits the projects. And then you'd like to share it, Grant?
No, I mean, it, we're definitely down in the Nats eyelash right now in terms of trying to figure out what we're looking at. I mean, we're talking about the specific fixtures going into bathrooms and classrooms and things like that. So it's really neat to see it at that level. The page turn is probably going to be a bit daunting, but it's exciting and pretty soon we're out to bed. So far, in this, it seems like it's trending really, really well.
Then the focus turns on elementary for a reason. So yeah, to make sure we get the biz back, so we know how much money we have in the project, whether we're right on or whether we've got a little bit extra money that can, towards other projects or other reversions. Then the focus shifts towards the second portion of the project, so just, we're just not there yet. It's, it's coming, it's coming.
Right. Consideration for potential action concerning the following: the district adverse...
All right. This plan also needs to be approved by the board each year. These are the things that we have in place that we currently utilize for students' school need a little bit extra focus or attention. So students who are considered at risk, these are the steps that principals and school counselors use to try to address those concerns. They're broken up by high school, middle school, and elementary, and these are the services that are provided to the students. Now, you guys did have a few, you did take a few off from, from last year. It's a pretty extensive document, but that's so we can continue to use all the tools we have in our toolbox.
I'll make a motion to approve the district's at-risk student plans for the 2025-26 school year.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And appointment of the WASB delegate and legislative liaison.
All right. This is also something that we do each year. This is a representative of the board that represents our community at the state level and the WASB state convention. So you vote on a number of resolutions. It's a big thick book like this. And you get to vote whether you approve or not approve, different resolutions that are proposed by the WASB and other school districts in the state. And there's also a regional workshop meeting as well. That one is held in Keel on Tuesday, October 21st at 6:30. They serve a dinner. There's other local school districts there to listen to a speaker and to collaborate on a number of different items. And if somebody's not able to go to that, there is a virtual option as well, number six. So in the past, I know Sarah's done it, Eric has done it, Grant's done it, Amanda's done it. So if anybody's interested, volunteer or else we can battle it out.
I'll do it again.
Well, is it, is it just January 21st, 22nd, 23rd?
It's not even that many. Like, so they have the one meeting in October and then the other, like, that's the conference. But the thing is actually like for the afternoon of like the 21st. It's not the whole period. So it's not a full commitment. It's the 21st, 22nd, 23rd.
So it's just the 21st and then?
Yeah.
October 21st, then two days. You act as the delegate for one session where everything is voted.
Correct. It's kind of very interesting.
I, I, I've said this the last few years, I, I think after attending the, the entire convention and seeing all the workshops and all of the sessions that they have, I think there's a benefit more than one of us going down to those, even though one of us could be a delegate. So if we can organize a group to go, if we can organize a group to go and pick a few of those sessions to attend together, I think that would be...
Even with some of the delegation thing, you can be in there without, you know, voting.
Yeah.
That was very interesting, to be completely honest. I was...
The schedule come a very stable work schedule to deal with the head to head. It might be interesting going on.
Sure.
If you, I can do it too.
Doesn't matter. It's up to you. It's completely up to you.
I don't want you to do it if you don't want to, to censor it all.
It's all yours.
You make the call.
It's all yours.
Okay.
I'm going to fight the anti-Asian.
That's rare.
All right. Chad, this thick book now belongs to you.
Congratulations. I think last year, I was like, I guess I'll do it.
Like on names on the order.
That's what was for me last year. I was like, I was just getting into it and I was like, I can't.
So Chad, let me know if you'd like to attend the WASB meet hall meeting. And that's October 21st. If not, like I said, there's a virtual option on November 6th. But anybody can attend that as well. So if anybody's interested, let me know. I'll get you registered and then we'll talk about the state convention. Probably next month because we're going to have to reserve rooms if there are more than one or two or three that want to come in. Think about it. Check your schedules and we'll talk in October or September, September. Uh, just to approve him as the official delegate.
I'll make a motion to appoint Chad Kraus as Elkhart Lake Limbula School District's WASB delegate and legislative liaison.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Good job. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And we are onto the second reading of the Neola policy.
Okay, we did the first reading last month, so this is just making sure that they end up solidified in our Neola book.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated policy changes as recommended by Neola.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. And contract, retirements and resignations.
All right. This is really, it's semi-resignation, but not really, because this person is maintaining the same structure, but it just explains why we have a vacant position. So Rhea Fox is going to resign from educational assistance in elementary, but she's going to pick up a educational assistant position in the childcare. Once again, that doesn't need any action on it because her contract designation has not changed. But that's why there's an empty spot in the child, or excuse me, the elementary here. So can we talk about approvals?
Chad, you?
Okay. So the first one we'd like to bring forward to the board is Rhea Fox, educational assistant in the childcare. Tina Blanke, food service assistant. And once again, that's vacated by Lynette earlier last year. Heather Berstberger, library educational assistant. That one was vacated by Christine Kepke. And then we're able to hire another elementary educational assistant. Interviews were pretty quick. We had a couple interviews late last week and the position was offered to Angelica Schmidt. And we're approval. Could we be to approve the resignation as well, or could we just bundle all of this up in the... Yeah, she's, she's really not resigning because she's holding the same contract designation. So that was just in there to explain what position is.
I'll make a motion to approve the staffing hires as presented.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those?
Hey, just a couple other informational items. Downtown night was a lot of fun. We saw everybody down there, which was really neat. We were handing out some Elkhart Lake promotional materials. We've got car magnets available or refrigerator magnets available. We handed out some schedules to, to people who were around and then we have new yard signs that have been printed as well. I don't know, Dane, I think we sold quite a bit of stuff, which was, which was neat. We're walking around with it, seeing them driving around town. So our new high school administrative assistant was wearing the L costume. It was hard in the heat in there. She took a lot of breaks and what a neat, what a neat night. Kids loved her. Dogs were a little afraid of her, but it was a neat, neat day. Glad she was able to do that. On Thursday, I know Chris mentioned earlier, school social worker. So this started with a conversation between Mr. Musin and one of our community members. So we share our police liaison officer with Howard's Grove. Howard's Grove has a school social worker over there. They really like how that position is utilized within the district. It really works with the one to five percent of students who don't find success working with our school counselors or working with path counselors. Okay? So our principals put their heads together and identified about 10 students who maybe used the services of a school social worker if it was offered. Through that conversation, one of our community members says, wow, that sounds like a great idea, something I could get behind and support. We would fully fund that position if you guys were to, were to have one. So there's a fundraiser on Thursday sponsored by Elkhart Cares and invited many of their friends and community members to see if they can raise the funds to fully support a school social worker. I don't think something that we necessarily want to put on our books and payroll at this time, other than like through a contracted service, through a full donation from, from Elkhart Cares and their donors. But we're going to try out, see how it goes and see how much money they, they fund on Thursday night. So their goal is to raise enough to keep it going for a few years and possibly have enough just to live off of the interest to keep it going perpetually. So we'll see, we'll see what the turnout is.
Well, like, you can think about it.
It was by invitation only, so I mean, as a board member, I don't think they would mind if it was interesting to reach out. I don't, I don't touch into the details, but it's, it was by invitation only, so it wasn't...
What is the funding?
It's just a fundraiser to talk about the needs of why this position would be a good fit for our district. So it'll be, Elkhart here speaking for a little bit, it'll be myself giving a presentation. Our SRO and community officers will be there along with the group elevate, which wants to also work to tell me to provide resources to students that have access to resources or a direct input right to on services.
What type of job a position would this be?
It would be one day a week, so it would be about a half hour segments working with both the kids.
That's great for being generous of them to want to make this happen.
Yeah, yeah, it was great that they offered it. And once again, started with, with Mike in that conversation and kind of ignited some steam. See what kind of success we have Thursday. Um, just want to thank Matt and his team for all the hard work that he's taken on in the summer. He's, he's been really a go-getter in his new position. And if you have a chance, drive by the, the fitness center outside. He remounted that in the matter of a week and it looks, looks really nice. But he's really been working on a lot of projects and doing a great job. So I just want to publicly recognize him and his team for all the hard work he's had and doing great. And now that Mrs. Schwinn has officially had her baby, we had to start looking for additional assistance in the, at the elementary school in terms of stuff. So we had a couple different options. We decided to ask her dad, Tom Homestead, to help out and assist with that position this fall. He was a teacher, school counselor, special ed teacher, principal, superintendent for many, many years. She had a child two years ago and he was her long-term sub there as well. And things worked really well and were able to communicate well together. So it works out nice because he just calls her, asks her, she's not supposed to be working, but tells her what he needs to do. It really is a leader to, to get those things done. So we'll, we'll publicly introduce him coming up soon and for about eight weeks. He's going to work 24 hours a week, four days a week. He'll do a nice job. Chris and I'll pick up the slack if necessary. Yeah, he will be there. You bet. That's all I have. Elkhart is next Wednesday, so come and get your custom.
If I remember, there was quite a bit left over last year.
Yeah, there was. Yeah, our students and staff didn't mind.
Motion to adjourn? I have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?